Good morning and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 2nd. We do begin each of our meetings with an invocation. And this morning, we have Pastor Raymond Pettit from outside the gates worship. We invite you to stand and join us.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. With no specific needs mentioned, we'll just go before the Lord. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come on this, the day after Labor Day. We hope that we've enjoyed what you've asked us to do. We just pray that we will not labor in vain. I just pray, Father, for if there's any healings necessary this morning, God, just bring Jehovah Rafe to us. Father, if there's someone who has their mind disturbed, we pray that you just bring them peace. Father, we thank you for the opportunity for each and every one of these things on the agenda this morning. I pray, God, that your will will be accomplished in all that they are going on. And I pray, Father, that you would be with each of these commissioners, as I said, about to do the work which you've called them to do. We thank you and we praise you and we ask it in your precious name. Amen.
And Vice Chair Williams, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Item three?
Item number three is staff emergency items, and I'm unaware of any staff emergency items today.
Item four?
Item number four is changes, postponements, and notice of the next meeting. I'm unaware of any changes or postponements to today's agenda, and the next meeting will be Tuesday, September 9th at nine o'clock.
Item five?
Item number five is a consent calendar, including items 5A through 5F2.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on an item on the consent calendar today? I don't see anyone in the room or online, so I'll bring it up here for any comments or motion.
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second?
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. One opportunity for comments from anyone. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Weisong?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate?
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that passes 5-0. Item six?
Item number six is comments by elected officials and commissioner liaison reports.
Okay, I don't see any countywide officials in the room, and I'll check to see if we have any online. We do not, so we'll start with Commissioner Weisong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, we had an urban renewal board. One of the fun things it got to do was the Children's Hospital tour. We had a great opportunity there, talking with all the nurses and staff about what makes children's really unique. If you have the opportunity, I highly recommend it. And then yesterday, with the Labor Day liftoff, great weather and got to see a couple of large flights of balloons take off. It was a great, great morning. This week, got a meeting with Green Mountain Falls to talk about some of the issues that are pressing on the small town up on the western edge of the county, Fountain Creek Watershed District Technical Advisory Group. And then a workforce center meeting, where this will be one of the few times we actually go into Teller County, since it's a shared workforce program between El Paso and Teller. So we'll be going to Teller to kind of finish up our meeting up there. So that's it.
Commissioner Nelson?
Good morning. I will be brief. Last week, Commissioner Geithner and I attended the Board of Health meeting, and we are currently looking for a new executive director of our El Paso County Department of Public Health. And so that's a really important job. I've heard it said it's maybe one of the most important things that this board will do, is that hiring of that position and making sure we find the right person that can further health in our community. And we also attended an opioid abatement council meeting, where we heard presentations of requests for some of that funding and had conversation on which ones we'd like to move forward for further discussion and at a later date, then we'll be allocating those dollars from the settlements to some of these requests to help support the opioid crisis that we are all experiencing and especially in our community, how we can serve the needs of our community specifically. And then tonight, I have a CSU Extension Advisory Committee meeting. So this will be the first time I'm attending one of these. Since I've joined the commission, they meet quarterly, and I look forward to meeting the folks involved in that and learning more about their work and their passions. Thanks.
Commissioner Applegate?
Thank you. Appreciate it. So Wednesday, I did, yes, I as well took a tour of the Children's Hospital. I was with Councilman Tom Bailey. We got to see kind of the ins and outs and their day-to-day operations. It was kind of interesting, too, because I actually felt that building, so I'd never seen it like in full completion and operation day-to-day on some of those floors. Wednesday was the back, the hail and farewell. It was cool to, we got to honor some of the outgoing commanders for the bases and also some of the incoming ones. We got to honor them and say, hey, we're glad you're here. We appreciate it. Come to the community, you know, get with any of these electeds, any of these, you know, your chamber, your citizens that are part of the community. If you have any questions, if you have anything you need. Friday, special shout out to Natalie Sosa for Cafe Conversations with our commissioners. She helped host of mine, she helped get it all together and organized. And special thanks to James, the owner out there at Western Omelet and Fountain. So very cordial, very good staff, very tentative, and they helped with our event, and it was just very nice. I got a really, a couple of really good conversations with some of the citizens there in Fountain. Saturday, I did speak at the Labor Day liftoff, but even though the weather didn't really cooperate with us, but it was just nice to be out there. It was good to just talk to everybody and shout out to their organizers, too. They really were busy, they had a lot going on, but they did a great job. And yesterday, I was in Fountain for the Fountain Fall Festival. Shout out to Commissioner Williams, thanks for coming to be a part of my entourage. So it was great, and I always have a good group. We call my volunteers the Apple Orchard, and it was Fountain. That was probably one of the, we didn't have as many entries as years before in the past, but there was probably more citizens that showed up just to watch the parade and just to go around in the park afterwards and hang out and talk to the different vendors and talk to the different people that were out there. And it was, it was really just a good community event. So I think we really, really went well. That's all I have.
Yes, good morning. I did enjoy going to the Fountain Fall Festival yesterday. The parade was actually interrupted by not one, but two trains, which was really interesting to me. That parade used to, I've, gosh, done it since about 2002. It used to be a whole lot longer, so I like the route that they do now. It's a little bit shorter. Fantastic turnout by the citizens, and I really enjoyed that, too. The, this week, I have on my calendar, we have the statewide Transportation Advisory Commission on Thursday, where we will talk about several things, but there's not a lot to talk about when there's not a lot of money going into roads. And those, and then I'll have a Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments. I believe it's an extended board meeting on Friday, so we can talk about the renewal of the Surface Transportation Bill in Congress and the routes that we want to follow to encourage Congress to make sure that Colorado gets its fair share of money. And other than that, those are the events I have this week. And looking forward to a productive week here at work as well.
I'm also going to be brief as it relates especially to the work that we do on the opioid council. I found it very interesting that there is discussion happening at the federal level about regulating and potentially all-out banning kratom, which is a substance I know not everyone has heard of yet. But Commissioner Marty McCary has talked a bit about this and the dangers that there are to our community, calling it potentially the next wave of the opioid epidemic. And yet, these products are currently for sale, probably every few blocks or so. And so it's a very interesting conversation that's happening. We've had a few conversations at the state legislature regarding kratom, but it's something that is really coming to the forefront of our communities. I'm glad to see that we are finally tackling the issue that could become a real concern to our community. I know I had to explain what it even was to my family because they weren't sure, but that can also be dangerous because it is being marketed as kind of a natural holistic product, but it has very, very potent and severe consequences. So interesting conversation, and I look forward to just continuing to hear what happens in that regard and how the opioid council may be able to interface and make sure that we are keeping our community safe. With that, we are on to item seven.
Item number seven is Community Service Organization Reports. 7A, Visit COS Strategic Roadmap Presentation. Doug Price, President and CEO, Colorado Springs Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug Price, President and CEO of Visit Colorado Springs. It's nice to see you. Lauren Nelson, nice to meet you officially. And I get a chance to see many of you out and about, and so it's wonderful to be with you this morning. Thank you for the, for the invitation. I have two things that I'd like to put into your hands, if I may. I wanted to make sure that you have a hard copy of our Destination Roadmap Plan that we have produced and I'll be talking about this morning. So you've got that, and I will refer in a little while to a little trifold that's called Tourism Pays that I would like to make mention of as well. Well, let me, if I may, go ahead and begin. Make sure I'm doing this correct. It is this one, isn't it? It's the other one. Okay. Oh, is that right? Oh, okay. Okay, here we go. Perfect, thank you. Well, by way of background, way back in 2018, we put together a 10-year master plan, called the Destination Master Plan for the Pike's Peak Region. And we identified initiatives that would guide us through as a strategic document for building a healthy visitor economy throughout the region. And what we, what we have subsequently done is as we were nearing the last three years of our plan, we put together a new three-year strategic roadmap for the years 25, 2025 through 2028, and that's what you have in front of you. The people who were involved with the process, you see the group above, there's five groups that were involved with this, and the participants down below and who was represented. And the county was represented very, very well by our board member, Crystal Latier, who was here this morning, and she was actually one of the co-chairs of our working group. So again, Crystal, thank you for, for the time and efforts that you've put into, to this plan. The three imperatives that came out, if you will, were number one, to secure additional promotional funding for Visit Colorado Springs to build year-round visitation and increase the length of stay. Number two is to grow overnight visitation in the off-season to create a more balanced and sustainable visitor economy. And number three is to increase the average length of stay to enhance the impact and better support local businesses. And we'll go into a little bit more detail on those, but those were the overarching three imperatives that, that came out of the plan. All right, getting there. For us, one, we really understand that collaboration is the absolute key to this. We work with the Cultural Office of the Pike's Peak Region, the Chamber in EDC, the Sports Corp, and City Parks, who are each called a tourism sector entity or a TSE. And each one of those organizations does get funding from the city's LART fund. And each one, if you will, has a, has kind of a lane that they do that's more or less their expertise that they work on. So clarifying for us over the next three years, where it makes the most sense for Visit Colorado Springs to support and advocate and preserve the resources to lead on those initiatives and then also work with those other organizations and support them as they build in their particular sectors. The areas that Visit COS has been identified to lead on, there are, I think, seven of them. The first one is funding to lead the development of a shared strategy to eventually increase the LART fund for Colorado Springs. Year-round and iconic adventures to build the brand on our region's absolute strongest attributes. People know that for the most part, when they come here, they come to do our outdoor activities that are so special to making this, this a very, very great place to come and visit. To grow our off-peak visitation by creating a winter and spring task force. Stewardship is important to advance the destination stewardship to ensure the long-term viability of tourism. Number five, packaging. Working with our hotels and our attractions and our rental car companies to collaborate on packages that make it easy for travelers to, to buy, if you will, and come and, and enjoy things. Collaboration with the, the state on the new Hosmer Visitor Center that's being built up at the Air Force Academy as an official Colorado Welcome Center. I guess I could pause there for a minute and say that probably the most asked question we get asked is, when, when will the new Visitor Center open up at the Air Force Academy? And over the weekend, I kind of got a firsthand confirmation date, and I was told that by the 15th of May, the Visitor Center would be open, which would be about two weeks prior to graduation this year. So I'm not saying you heard it here first, but I've been, I wanted to be able to answer that question if I could this morning, so that's what I have been told. Centers for Excellence to focus outreach on meetings and conferences that, that would fit really, really well here, similar to Space Symposium. And then coordinated planning, working to drive tourism through. We represent both El Paso, Teller, and Fremont Counties. And so we want to make sure we're working regionally with all of our organizations out there and governments to make sure we're driving tourism when they need it and want it. The areas that we will support in this plan, it's right there in front of you. I'll just be quickly, to increase air service, have more signature events that would come to, to Colorado Springs. You know, I heard a couple of you say, and I was at a meeting earlier this morning, this weekend was the 49th Labor Day liftoff. And the, the impact of that event on our community is almost immeasurable when you, not only from an economic standpoint, but civic pride. So many people enjoy taking, inviting friends and family in to, to enjoy that event. Arts and culture, working with our parks, trails, and roadways, working with sports and entertainment to, to have more events here. And those are the, those are the ones that we intend to support. And the way those will be measured is, number one, a growth in LART revenues. Number two, a growth in local sales tax revenues. And number three, a growth in overnight visitors. I'd like to stop there before I go on and see, kind of going through it quickly, but I wanted to see if there are any questions that I can answer thus far.
Looks like we're ready to proceed.
So far, so good. Great, thank you. All right. Couple other things that I wanted to just mention. In the last summer, we did what we called a resident sentiment survey, where we reached out to both via survey, where we talked about 400 different residents to try and get a sense of how do they look, how do they feel about tourism as it relates to our community? And for those of you who've been here and maybe even heard me talk in the past, you realize that General Palmer built this community on tourism. We, you know, it was before medical tourism was a, was a term. People came here for, for health reasons. And so we wanted to make sure that when people thought of tourism, we wanted to know how they felt. And so here are some of the, the highlights that came out of this 400-person survey. 60% agreed that the positive impacts of tourism outweigh the negatives. 78% saw increased tourism as a way of enhancing economic opportunity. 65% showed support for visitors to pay what was called a tourism tax that adequately compensates for the impact they create on our infrastructure and our outdoor recreation areas. And 80% support the idea that the tourism industry should educate visitors on how to be responsible and respectful travelers. So for us, we, we kind of stood back from this, and there certainly are other things that came out of the survey. But it seemed, and these were all people who were selected as likely voters, if you will, in, in the, in the future elections. And they, they understand that tourism is an important part of our economy and certainly, you know, gave us some feedback on some things we should be doing, we can be doing going forward. We did some follow-up focus groups to go even deeper on some of these subjects, these topics that came out. So we felt like in 2024, we, we got our arms around, if you will, the community and making sure that they understood that some of these attractions that we get to enjoy in these events also are, are shared and bring economic impact to, to our, to our region. So that was, that was in the summer of 2024. I will show you the little trifold that you have here that's, that Crystal just handed out. It's called Tourism Pays. And this comes from the 2024 Longwood Study. It's a visitor profile that, that kind of gives some of the overarching impact figures. And when I, some of these, when people see them, they're staggering at the fact that 25.5 million visitors brought $3.1 billion economic impact to the region. One of the things I like to point out is of those roughly 25 million visitors, only 12 million, only 12 million spend the night. 13, over 13 million are day trippers who come in, they'll come off I-25. They might pull into Garden of the Gods Park or, you know, want to go to the zoo or go up Pike's Peak or whatever, and they only spend one day. And the economic impact of those people is about, per person, about $69 per person. When you do stay overnight in a hotel, it goes up to a When you do stay overnight in a hotel, it goes up to about $189. And those of us that live here know that you certainly can't do it in a day here in the Pikes Peak Region. So part of our job is to, as you'll see down below, the very next, well, I should say, visitation did increase overall in 2024 by 2.7%, and spending went up by 5.7%. The next bullet shows that the length of stay has increased from 2.2 nights to 2.7 nights here in the region. That's huge for us, to be able to get another half-day of people staying here. The economic impact is increased, and for us, if we can get more of an economic spend, we don't necessarily have to bring that many more overall visitors. And you'll see the bottom bullet point there, the percentage of visitors across the four seasons, March through May is 26%, Summer, June through August is 30%, Fall, September through November is 24%, and the Winter, December or February is 20%. So one of our goals always has been to flatten that visitation curve in the summer and have people understand what a great year-round destination this is. And here are some things that are already in action. We are always reminding ourselves that this is a three-year plan and that we don't have to try and get all these things done. But as a result of that recent resident sentiment survey, we are doing more on our website to get locals to understand the things there are to do. And so we have a Locals Corner, and we have what we now call the Pikes Peak Neighborhoods Project. We got a grant from the Colorado Tourism Office to fund that project, and we've taken 25 neighborhoods throughout the region and kind of profiled them and made videos and let people know what some of the special neighborhoods there are here to do in our community. We are going to put together for this winter of 2025 into '26, our first-ever winter leisure campaign to showcase really how mild and sunny winters we have here in Colorado Springs. And we, our board members at Visit COS are now starting, now that they've seen and helped develop this plan, they're now volunteering to serve on various strategic initiatives and committees as part of this roadmap. And in addition, I mentioned the Hosmer Visitor Center opening. We are working with the Chamber and EDC on a project called Source COS, where we are all working together to try and tell national stories to the media about Colorado Springs and the Pikes Peak Region. And we are also partnering with Downtown Partnership on their Clean and Safe Program. And you see a couple other organizations there that we are already actively working with. So for us, the final next steps are to have our board and committees and our staff all aligned on the projects that they want to be involved with, make sure we have alignment with our various tourism entities, sectors, and third, to execute and report and come back to you and City Council and the Mayor's Office and report on our progress. And so with that, I will stop and be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning.
Going back to Slide 10 on the survey, you said that 17% kind of disagreed with tourism. Were there some easy changes there that might be able to swing, you know, 5% to 10% of that back to the positive? And what was the negatives or what were?
Not easy. You know that saying, if they were. No, they, certainly, they look at congestion. They look at traffic as something that is noticeable, particularly in the summer seasons. And that really goes two ways. Not only is it congestion on the highways, but they also look at our trails and open spaces that we so adore here, and they realize that there are a lot of people that are sharing, we're sharing our trails and open spaces and path, you know, trails with, that we really, it's not an easy fix. I will say this, Commissioner, that one of the things we try to do with our, the neighborhoods projects and looking at trails that are not the most popular and trying to let people know that, you know, Saturday morning at 9:00 AM is not the best time to go to Garden of the Gods Park. It's just, you know, in July. So we're, we know that trying to build some of this off-season business will help, but there really aren't easy fixes for congestion, if you will.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nelson?
Can you speak a little bit to how your organization partners with private organizations in our community that are providing services or activities that will contribute to the interest of people coming to visit? I'm just thinking about horseback riding through Garden of the Gods or, you know, those activities that it's not just about sightseeing, but also when you're bringing your family, something that keeps them entertained. And so can you speak a little bit to how your organization helps encourage certain activities?
That's a great question. And I think one, maybe one of the most recent ones that I touched on briefly, is working with Downtown Partnership on this new Clean and Safe Program. We know through feedback from shop owners and different people in downtown Colorado Springs that they don't always feel safe with some of the things that they see downtown. And so our board, when we heard about this program, felt that in the interest of visitors who are coming and staying in downtown hotels and eating at restaurants and going to art galleries and things like that, that we needed to do a part, do our part to make sure that the ambassadors are well-trained and that they, and that they're, we feel that's an obligation of our organization to make sure that when we invite people to come, we want them to feel clean and safe. So that's one that is the most recent one we're doing. We certainly work with organizations like the Sports Corp. We are on each other's boards of directors. We help Labor Day liftoff. We help market that program and make sure that people know, if they come in from out of town, how it all works. And we've got all that information up on our website. So those are two that just immediately come to mind. And are there any organizations that come to your mind that you might want me to either know about or address?
No, I was just thinking about how this is a good example of partnership between private or free market, you know, people that have their businesses here that then draw tourism and then it overall benefits our community through funding, an additional funding source. And so I just wanted to understand sort of the overlap and the part that you play in supporting the free market to help draw tourism and encourage that and just the part that your organization...
Yeah, one other that comes to my mind is that we have almost 500 organizations that are paid members or partners, if you will, of Visit Colorado Springs. And so we try to work very individually, and many of them are small businesses. And so we work with them very closely to make sure that whether they want to know about, how could, what is AI? What's the future of AI for our business? And so we work with all of our members to really make sure that the smallest of businesses to the broad more are well-represented as part of Visit COS.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like no additional questions.
That's terrific. Thank you all very, very much for allowing me to speak this morning. And I also, again, I want to acknowledge the value of having a Crystal Latier on our board. She just has been on our board for a number of years, but when we need volunteers, she steps up and not only just serves, but she'll lead, and we're very appreciative of her being able to be on our board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we are on item eight.
Item number eight is public comment on items not scheduled on the agenda. And Madam Chair, I'm unaware of anyone signing in ahead of time to speak, but there is one person that would like to be called in today.
Okay, I will just do a call here in the room first. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak during public comment today on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to our online call.
Hello? Veronica Baker. Good morning, Commissioners. We are disappointed to learn that the Joint Appointment Committee was abruptly canceled last Tuesday. Many of us had cleared our schedules to attend, expecting updates on the longstanding vacancy of Dora Gonzalez and the upcoming vacancy of Debbie English. We are now only about three months away from the end of the year, when both seats must be filled. It is imperative that this process move forward now. Rushing at the last minute will not give applicants or the public the thoughtful consideration they deserve. Citizens should not feel punished for caring enough to participate. Canceling meetings without explanation erodes trust and undermines the transparency this process requires. We respectfully ask that you reschedule the Joint Appointment Committee without delay and commit to a clear, reliable process that honors both the applicant's and the public's time. Thank you.
Okay, we are on item nine.
Item number nine is the called-up consent calendar, and there are no items called up.
Item 10?
Item number 10 is a resolution approving a property tax increment revenue agreement with the Colorado Springs Urban Renewal Authority for the Odyssey at North Weber Urban Renewal Plan. Crystal Latier, Executive Director, Economic Development Department, and Nikki Simmons, Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Crystal Latier, Executive Director of Economic Development here at El Paso County. We are pulling up the slide deck for you now. All right, apologies for the delay. As noted, we are here today to discuss the Odyssey at North Weber. It's a property tax increment financing request from the Colorado Springs Urban Renewal Authority. Today, we'll hear remarks from both El Paso County staff, as well as the Colorado Springs Urban Renewal Authority and the development team. A quick reminder about our thorough and transparent process. You'll see all the steps that El Paso County goes through when we receive a tax increment financing request from the Urban Renewal Authority. We find ourselves today on the very last step there, the formal B.O.C.C. agenda item. Another quick reminder that the county does not have any authority over blight designation. The city of Colorado Springs and the Colorado Springs Urban Renewal Authority follow state statutes that are outlined in that determination. For this specific request and project, five of the 11 qualifying conditions of blight were found within the project area. So a little bit more about the project. This project is located in County Commissioner District III. It's comprised of two parcels, a little over four acres of land, and this development includes about 120 residential multifamily units consisting of one, two, and three bedrooms. And they're really looking at a range of 80% to 120% of our area median income. So the residents living in these units are considered workforce housing, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later on in the presentation. Here are just a few more site plans or renderings related to the development. As shared last week as well, there will be an adjustment to Craigmore Road, and that will be turned into a cul-de-sac. And then this is more of a bird's eye view so that you can have a real clear picture on where the development is located. So just east of kind of north Nevada and some of those other revitalization efforts happening as well. Here are some additional site photos. You'll see this includes some vacant land as well as a portion of an unused parking lot. And as mentioned, these residential units will be comprised of one, two, and three-bedroom units. You denote on this slide some of the average rents that are expected for the area median incomes. And at this time, I will turn the presentation over to our Chief Financial Officer, Nikki Simmons, who will go through some of the financial aspects of the request.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nikki Simmons, Chief Financial Officer. This request is purely property tax-based. There is no sales tax request as there is not a retail component of the development. So at this time, the request is for 100% of the county's property tax mill levy. The URA provides us a report that outlines the taxes, and they use the current county mill levy. But as we're aware, the county's mill levy is temporarily reduced. One moment. I apologize. The county's mill levy is temporarily reduced for table purposes, and so your financial services staff recalculates those numbers in accordance with our full mill levy to give you an idea of what the possible exposure could be. And so with the developers and the URA's calculations, the contribution to the TIF project would be $376,000 over the 25-year period where the county would retain the base of approximately $43,000. When we recalculate those funds with the full mill levy, the total contribution could be $480,000 with the county retaining the same base of $41,480. So somewhere probably in between there would be the actual amount, but it's all based on the assessed valuation times the current mill levy. So then we look at the overall net present value of that contribution, which if you put it in today's dollars, is about $282,000 in today's dollars, which represents about 0.008% of the county's tax base over those 25 years. And then in year '25, we look at what would be put into the county's tax base at that time as the entire amount would come in, which is about $20,000 in that final year. This project is estimated to bring in about 286 new residents to central Colorado Springs. There's not a significant impact on county infrastructure, as obviously it's located within city limits, but there are impacts to other services that the county provides to all residents of El Paso County. And so we look at the cost of that, which is about an annual cost of $97,000 for those 286 residents. This project, with it not bringing in sales tax or not generating sales tax, the citizens, however, would continue to buy things. We get about $228 annually from each citizen in sales tax revenues. We also would retain any use tax collected for the purposes of building the project. At this time, I think Crystal is going to talk to this.
All right, as we continue to look at some of the community impacts of the project, something that El Paso County does is we always look at those eligible public improvements. And so you'll see kind of two tables or charts on your slide. The one on the left is what the project team shares within their impact reports related to the eligible public improvements. But El Paso County also rekind of calculates that, and we look at our highest priorities from a public improvement standpoint. So you will denote there on the right-hand side what we are saying, what we think the highest prioritized eligible public improvements total is. And again, that's really related more to the physical... And again, that's really related more to the physical infrastructure and public improvements. Some additional information to keep in mind is that, as we mentioned before, that these units provide some rental housing for residents working in our community, such as teachers, healthcare workers, government employees, and service employees. Additionally, there are some large-scale regional initiatives underway related to childcare and childcare initiatives. So a real strength of this project is right next door, there is a Handprints Early Education Center, so a daycare and preschool opportunity for the residents living in this this coming housing. And then, as Ms. Simmons denoted, El Paso County will generate a significant amount of property tax upon the conclusion of the TIF now that the area has been redeveloped. And at this time, we're happy to bring up the Colorado Springs Urban Renewal Authority Director, Jeriah Walker. And I will ask for AV to help us exit this slideshow so that we could pull up a new one, please.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Jeriah Walker, Executive Director to the Colorado Springs Urban Renewal Authority. Thank you for having us here today. Excited to be sharing this project. Again, this has been one that we've been working on with the developer for about a year now and lies just within the area of influence of the big North Nevada corridor study that we've been doing through the Urban Land Institute and area business owners and residential owners and inviting the taxing entities to take part in that process as well. Obviously, the developer Drew Geiser will be up here in a minute to talk about the need for this missing middle housing, but it's extremely challenging housing to get built, but something that that area certainly is called for and needs. There's also within that without that entire corridor, and this block is no different. There's big infrastructure issues, et cetera. So we're excited about the project, excited to bring it to you, and hopefully we'll get your yes vote today. So with that being said, I'm going to invite Drew up. I also have just online, if there's any questions about the data or the methods they used, I do have the consultants that did all the reports online, should the Commissioners wish to ask an individual question of them as well. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. So the Odyssey at North Weber is a new development that'll bring in 120 units on 4.4 acres. As Jeriah mentioned, we're just in the influence area, the North Nevada Renew North Nevada Master Plan on the north segment, which hasn't had a lot of a lot of things starting yet. So we're pretty excited that this project will be kind of a kickoff to that area. As he mentioned, we're targeting towards the missing middle. Missing middle is the 80 to 120%. Really, this development, we're looking more at the 80 to 90% kind of AMI area as far as where our rents hit. We're pretty excited about this as well. When you look at the location, this is going to be some of the first new housing brought into the immediate area in, I think, over 50 years. So that's going to be a great thing as well. What we did is we have a unit mix of one bed, one bath, two bed, two bath, and three bed, two bath, and we're heavier on the three bed than most of the developments that are going on right now, which also kind of plays to the the missing middle of the housing for families as as they move. Some of the other things we've done with our design aspect is we've stuck to 12 dwelling units per buildings as opposed to 24 to kind of create a lighter density on the site. And then we have the open space and kind of park area in the middle of that triangle there to to create kind of a soft amenity for the people as well. We have covered parking available, community fitness space in the leasing center also available with this development. This is a housing continuum from the Colorado Division of Housing, kind of illustrating the missing income rental housing. As we talked about last week, there's not a lot of financial programs that can help build this type of housing, whereas affordable housing and then obviously luxury and market rate don't require, you know, the help to get through. So this is kind of a neat area in that 80 to 100%, 120% AMI that we're we're trying to target. This just shows where our rents fall within those different AMIs based on the unit size and the unit mix and where our projected rents are right now. This is another map showing the Renew North Nevada Avenue Master Plan and kind of our location there on that north zone, just just outside in the influence area. This is from a market study we had a third-party due out of Denver called Department Appraisers, and they came back showing that though there's an oversupply regionally in Colorado Springs when this market study was done, we're seeing that absorb now. But our primary market is undersupplied with 1.8 years of supply for three years worth of demand. So it goes back to speaking of the not having housing in that immediate area. Just some information on the Renew North Nevada Plan and how the student housing and the market rate multifamily residential fit into what the goal is for that that north segment. Some of the public improvements, this includes terminating Craigmore into a cul-de-sac so that we don't have that awkward four-way stop there coming out of Craigmore, as well as some storm water being brought in and widening Weber Street going to the north. Currently, we're in financing with HUD on a 221D4 loan. We're preparing our firm application, which should be in in the next two months or so. With completed market studies, first round of HUD appraisals and our second rounder are being delivered next week. Our building plans are currently in review with Regional Building Department, and we have an approved development plan with the city. Our group and our team, we have a local G C here that we've selected to build the project. And personally, Blue Truck Capital, my group and my partners, we're all Colorado-based, and Blue Truck only focuses on Colorado Springs. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I do want to ask just one question for the record. I asked you this in our work session, but it's really important to me that we continue to talk about this and get it on the record. So why are these not going to be condos that can help families build wealth?
Condos are difficult in the state of Colorado right now to build for insurance reasons and for long-term liability.
Okay, thank you. We we talk about this often, and I sometimes hear, how do you know that that's true? And I say, well, because developers tell me it's true. And if they're not building them, that's a pretty good indication. So thank you. We've got to continue to fix that because we do know that. And and folks need apartments too, right? I mean, there are just some people who are not prepared in, you know, to make those purchases for various different reasons or temporarily need different types of housing, and I think that that's incredibly important. But we do know that the way for people to build wealth and to, you know, reach that American dream is to be able to purchase that, is to be able to purchase a home. So thank you for just putting that on the record for me. Appreciate that.
Welcome. And when we fill out our insurance, they ask us if we're building in either New York or Colorado. Those are two states that they ask for.
Really?
Just for clarity there.
We're on the naughty list with New York. That's good to know. Okay, any other questions? Okay. Ms. Latier, do you have an additional presentation?
No, that would conclude our presentation. So this item would call for an approval of a tax increment financing agreement. Thank you.
Okay, so I will bring it up here for any comments or motion.
I would move approval of item number 10.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. One more opportunity for comments. Commissioner Nelson?
Just a comment that this did come previously at a work session. So if it appears as though we're not asking questions, it's because we already asked them in the past. So if you're just tuning in today and you're wondering and want to learn more, go back and watch that work session because it was really informative. So thank you for presenting previously.
I think one of the advantages of this one is that they're just asking for property tax. We get a lot more stubborn when you ask for sales tax, as Mr. Walker will confirm. And so this is just, it's a nice, small development with just property tax. So and yeah, we did ask a lot of questions in the work session about how the financing worked and those kind of things, so.
I'll just add mine briefly, and I've made some of these in the work session as well. I don't love this particular state law, not because I don't think that there aren't important times where this can be valuable and be a win-win for all residents and taxpayers. But as I've said before, it depends on which side of the table you're sitting at. If you are listening to a TIF and you are at the city, it's a great way to help get your infrastructure covered in partnership with a developer to get additional housing in your community. If you are sitting, as Commissioner Nelson previously did on the school board, the state back fund or backfills these revenues, so no skin off your back. Here at the county, however, while it's positively contributing to infrastructure, it's infrastructure we would not normally have to fund, which means it does take away from our county priorities. This is a rather small one, and because of the property tax nature of this one, as Commissioner Williams noted, we have limited legal options in this case. And also, this actually is a very good project, so I will I will be a yes on this. But I always like to put those on the record. We don't always agree with state statute and how it works. And with that, I will just check one more time for any additional comments. Looks like we're ready to call the roll. Commissioner Weisong?
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Applegate?
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes 5-0. Thank you and congratulations. Okay, item 11.
Item number 11 is Department and Committee Reports Non-Action Items, and there are none.
Item 12?
Item number 12 is the addendum, and there are no addendums today.
Item 13?
Item number 13 is the Executive Session, 13A. Executive Session pursuant to CRS 2464024E. El Paso County Sheriff's Office and County Human Resources Risk Management Division are requesting an executive session with the Board of County Commissioners related to security arrangements at county facilities to include specialized details of security arrangements or investigations, including defenses against terrorism, both domestic and foreign, and including where disclosure of the matters discussed might reveal information that could be used for the purpose of committing or avoiding prosecution for a violation of the law. Kenneth Hodges, County Attorney, and Rick Bransford, Human Resources and Risk Management.
Okay, do you have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, I'll call a roll. Commissioner Weisong?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate?
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes 5-0. We are in an executive session.